All right, it's six o'clock on December 19th, 2024. Welcome to the Town of Sherburne Select Board Meeting. Relatively short agenda, and I think should be pretty smooth tonight. I'm gonna kick off by please ask the town administrator to please read the agenda. And you know, it's not an agenda. I believe we have a public comment as well. Go ahead, Jeremy.
Yeah, thank you, Eric. This is the select board agenda for December 19th at 6:00 PM. The first order of business is a cable license hearing regarding the renewal of cable television license of Comcast Cable Communications Management LLC. Item number two is to vote on various licenses. There is A B C C licenses for Fireside Tavern at 33 North Main Street, 33A North Main Street, Sherburne Fuels at 21 South Main Street, Art Specialties at 11 South Main Street, Keshav Das Inc., Sherburne Wine and Spirits at 29A North Main Street, and Class Two Used Car Dealers licenses at MCCMS Enterprises at 26, that's Rose's Automotive, at 26 North Main Street, Sherburne Auto Sales at 27R North Main Street, David Ayo Loi at 21 Coolidge Street, Common Victrolers licenses at, for Don Kelsey at Northern Management Group, AKA DBA, Doing Business As Dunkin' Donuts, 23 South Main Street, CNL Frostery on North Main Street, Chomar Rustic Pizza at 21 South Main Street, and state licenses at Willow Tree Farm, 12 Ames Drive, Long Run Farm at 70 Bullard Street, Bogastow Farm at 12 North Main Street, Green Hills Farm at 51 Whitney Street, Wild Star Farm at 16 Nathan Hill Lane, Sweet Metal Farm at 111 Coolidge Street, Deep Hope at 26 Bullard Street, P Hardiman at 113 Western Ave, Horsebrook Farm at 39 Brushhill Road, Green Acres Farm at 192 Maple Street, Mount Zion Ranch on 34 Great Rock Road, F Anderson on 42 Washington Street. And your third and last agenda item for this evening is the consent agenda with a request from Laura Robbins of Fireside Tavern to be able to serve alcohol until 12:30 on New Year's Eve, a request for a one-day porn license on December 21st for Bar Masters, a private event at the community center, and the town administrator's payroll warrant.
All right, very good. Any motions or amendments to set agenda?
Reproval.
All in favor, Jeff? Steven?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
I might as well. Okay, well, we'll start off. I believe those are requests for a public comment. Is that from you, Nancy?
Thank you. I appreciate that at your last meeting, you again voted to not split the tax rate, as we do have little enough business in town, and a split rate would hurt what we do have. I also appreciate the work it takes in the budget process to balance the wants and needs of the town with that of the taxpayers. I remember well, as perhaps some of you do, years of overrides and years of being the second highest average single-family tax bill in the state. And years ago, hearing a former select board member predicting that we were unsustainable as a standalone community. But we still made quality of life here a priority, investing in our future, struggling to stay within the two-and-a-half mandate, using the tools available to us, one being debt exclusion borrowing, and when possible, within budgets, funding capital items creatively. And I am hoping for future generations, we will continue to find the will and the way. You expressed concern that excluded debt circumstance two-and-a-half. And in your comments spoke of CPA, which it needs to be noted also circumvents the protection of two-and-a-half. The town's vote against CPA from most was not a condemnation of all spending, but rather the method of funding. I am hoping we will not continue to re-litigate that issue, but will continue vetting and finding a way to fund the important services projects and amenities which make this town so special. And on a related issue, in my time as collector long ago, it was not uncommon for a taxpayer to come to the counter and ask why the tax bill went up when the tax rate went down. I think it's important to keep reminding taxpayers, though an admirable goal, lowering the tax rate has no meaning unless taken in conjunction with a value attached to the property. If the value of all the property in town goes up and the amount of money needed to be raised to pay the bills remains the same, the tax rate can be lowered to still collect the same amount of money. Then the tax bill may remain the same. But also adding value and new building and/or additions and renovations increases the overall small tax base, as the former director of assessing explained. And what we spend and how we spend it makes a difference in the tax bill. We determine that by vote at town meeting. Again, I do appreciate your time and dedication doing your part in an attempt to make that as painless as possible. And I thank you. Enjoy the holidays and the best to you in 2025.
All right, thank you very much, Nancy. Okay, moving on. Agenda item number one, cable license hearing regarding renewal of cable television license of Comcast Cable Communications Management LLC. No further ado, I'll read the, I'll read the notice at the start of this hearing. The Select Board of the Town of Sherburne, as a cable television license issuing authority, will hold a cable license hearing and proceeding virtually on Thursday, December 19th, 2024, at 6:00 PM regarding renewal of the cable television license of Comcast Cable Communications Management LLC, formerly Comcast of Massachusetts, to LLC. Pursuant to Section 626H of the Cable Act, 47 U.S.C. Section 546H, informal cable license renewal process and 207 CMR 3.05. The public is invited to attend the virtual meeting, impose questions, and/or provide comments. A copy of the proposed license renewal, a copy of the proposed cable television renewal license and relevant applications, reports, statements, and/or amendments, if any, in the possession of the town, in the possession of the town to be considered at the hearing will be available for review and reproduction at the Town Hall, 19 Washington Street during regular town hours. All right, so who's opening this up? Is that you, William?
Hi there, William Solomon, Special Cable Counsel. Hi, folks, Paul, Jeff, board members. So let's give you a brief update. We've reached a an agreement on the basic terms and conditions of a license. I want to thank the negotiating committee, town administrator, Jerry Marsette, Diane, and then committee member Doug Ambos, and then Mike Klein from Dover Sherburne Community Television. A great team. We had a number of sit-down meetings, and also Jeff was at the important meetings. We had a great number, really good meetings, reached agreement on the basic terms. It's a very strong license. It's one of the top three or four, if not higher, licenses in the Commonwealth in terms of financial payment to the town for community television. And that really represents the relationship built, in this case, with Comcast and their understanding how important community television is to the Town of Sherburne. So where things stand is we have that agreement. I've drafted and then updated again today a license that I'm presenting to Kathy Maloney, the Senior Government Affairs Manager for Comcast. We went over it briefly. I'm leaving it with the members of a working group to provide any comments going forward. I'll then provide it prior to the new year to Kathy Maloney. With the goal of again meeting, continuing the hearing, again meeting. The board's meeting on January 9th, and if Comcast works the process on its end, and I think it can, given the fact that we're not totally reinventing the wheel here, I would hope that the board could then continue the hearing, discuss any questions or comments they have on the license, and vote on January 9th. Provided a summary, there's one error in the summary on the capital support. It's $58,000, that's correct, but that's $5,800 a year, not $8,500 a year. Let me take you through the license. As always, with a Comcast license, and this is good news, and this is from the summary I provided. It's a 10-year license. Comcast now has 426 subscribers in Sherburne. That's down from 47. That's the end of 2023, December 31st, 2023. 426 subscribers, down from a year earlier, of 479. Verizon at the end of last year had 471 cable subscribers, down from 504. The PEG, PEG is Public Educational Government Access Community Television. The support continues at 5% of gross revenues. That's the maximum allowed under the Cable Act. That's a full definition of gross revenue, includes no arbitrary, it doesn't have any arbitrary deductions. It includes things like advertising, home shopping, equipment, fees that might be charged by the cable company. Those are all included in the definition of gross revenue. The capital support, as mentioned, is $58,000, a very strong number, because we have 426 subscribers. That's $5,800 per year. We went back and forth. I want to thank Kathy Maloney and Comcast for working to finalize between the lines of that number and to, as I understand, that have agreement on $5,800 a year, capital support. In addition to that, there's a quarter percent for capital support, a quarter percent of Comcast, the licensees or its affiliates' gross annual revenue. So it's a two-part capital payment. The set dollar amount of $58,000 over 10 years and the quarter percent of gross revenue, which gives some flexibility for Comcast if their subscriber numbers or gross revenue changes. The PEG access channels, the good news is that within 24 months, the town will have from Comcast, a high-definition PEG access channel. We wordsmithed this on our side. The thing, this is the one last issue that I think there'll be some discussion on. Ms. Maloney and I have had a number of conversations. We're both in agreement that it's helpful to jive the Sherburne PEG access channel at the same time as the Dover PEG access HD channel, HD channels for both. And I've written that up in a certain way that provides flexibility for the parties to work together. That's the one final issue I think that we'll have some further discussion on, but we both agree it'll be within 24 months. And we both agree that it's helpful to jive that with Dover. What's unique about Dover and Sherburne here is that unlike most recent Comcast licenses, after that channel is provided by Comcast, Comcast does not have the right to take back a standard definition channel in less than 24 months. So you now have three channels, P, E, and G. They're in standard definition. They'll be upgraded to what's called Serial Digital Interface, Higher Quality Video and Audio. Within 24 months, the high-definition channel will be provided within 24 months. You'll then have four channels, three SDI standard definition channels, and one HD with Comcast having the right to, within a certain period of time, and we may jive this with Dover, as I mentioned, to reclaim one of the standard definition channels. Whether they want to do it at that point, they may not. It'd be nice to be able to keep it. And so I think this was a good compromise, not one that's being made a lot at this point, but helpful to Sherburne and mirrors what we were able to do in Dover. PEG cable casting. There is currently some remote buildings that are connected now. The elementary school and the community building, figuring out the name of it next to the Town Hall. Those will not be connected going forward because they're not being used, but the town would have the right to connect it itself if it would like. And importantly, what will be made operational, although already built but made operational, is the connection between the Sherburne Town Hall and the studio at the Dover Sherburne Regional High School. So those folks can see what's coming out on your channel so they can better monitor it from the studio. That connection has been built by Comcast, and it's going to now be made operational. And that's an important connection to have. So the signal will continue to go from the Sherburne Town Hall to the Comcast headend. I think it's a Natick. And also will go from the Sherburne Town Hall to the Dover Sherburne Access Regional Studio. And at one point, that it may go from the studio then to the headend, rather than directly to the headend from Sherburne. Let's see, the cable service continues to be available everywhere in the town. It's up to any easements that might be needed, and that's always been a great provision of this license that the prior boards, before my time even, have obtained for the residents that, no matter where you live, you have the right to have cable service available, not only in the Comcast license, but also in the Verizon license. And as we know, there are areas of town that are not incredibly dense. And that was something the earlier boards had succeeded with, and we've maintained it throughout. Standard installation stays the same. If it's 150 feet between the, where the line comes to the road, at the road to the house, that'll be a standard installation, one price, $50, $60. If it's 125 feet and it's underground, it's also a standard installation. If the distance is more than that, the first 150 or 125 or underground feet are at the standard price, except if it requires boring or some special installation. So that's a reasonable distance that continues. And then finally, cable service, two issues, cable service to public buildings. The state law requires that cable service to public buildings be free of cost. That's been provided by cable companies, Comcast predecessors. When they first came, Comcast comes to a town, came to Sherburne, and said, you know, please let us in here right away. We'd like to provide this cable service. We'd like to have a business. And by the way, we'll give you that cable service at no charge. Forty years later, you had other companies, not Comcast directly. Other folks petitioned the FCC to say, well, that should be something that they want to call in-kind consideration, where if it's provided by a cable company, since it's not PEG equipment or facilities, which is excluded from this 5% franchise fee, this in-kind consideration, they said, should count toward the 5% cap. So that if you're at 5%, and we get 5% from the company for PEG access support, that cable service to public buildings, if the marginal cost of that is $10,000 a year, then that should go to the 5%, meaning that your 5% cap, meaning that your 5% payment would be less $10,000. This is after, you know, many years where it was not the same, it was not done. To Comcast credit, they haven't moved to implement this. It seems ironic that having offered it at the beginning and then having it codified that there are other companies that were claiming that that cities and towns were breaking the legs of those companies to provide these sort of services. Comcast has not indicated that they have any interest in applying that. But as a result, my judgment has been that for a town that is at 5% of gross revenues, the maximum allowed, the better approach is not to require the cable service in the license, because then the license would say that the cable company has the right to implement this FCC interpretation or order, but rather to say nothing, because that's how it began. That they provided that cable service to high schools, to elementary schools, to public buildings at no charge. So continuing the acceptance of that kind of offer, my judgment is, there's no need to put it in the license, no need to raise the issue that it's a requirement. Instead, rather than being a requirement, it's something that the cable company does voluntarily as a good corporate citizen and that the town accepts. So as a result, in the draft license, we no longer include the requirement for cable service to public buildings, because we believe that Comcast will do that as a good corporate citizen. Or if I, with respect to another company, I would have said then, if they don't want to do that, if they want to take cable away from Nancy and Jimmy, then, you know, they would see that community's response in the newspaper. Finally, there could be a continued senior discount. We've had some broad, we have some, the broadest financial criteria in the state to qualify, because it's a financial qualification requirement. But the broadening of those qualification criteria means that, you know, some more people will, might be able to qualify for the senior discount. Be happy to answer any questions, and because the public hearing, you want to hear from the public.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Like I said, being a public hearing, I'll first take some questions from the board here and then open up the general public. And I see Marion has her hand raised. Yes, Marion.
All right, Mr. Solomon. I must admit, I don't understand all the ins and outs of this. It's my first time around the block with this Comcast license. But what springs to mind for me is, as you know, lines, including cable lines like Comcast's, run pretty much through the air in Sherburne. It's very little underground. And they get, things running through the air get damaged regularly in winter storms. So is there anything in here, or should there be, regarding the, who pays for repairs of the central lines? Obviously, to an individual house, it's the homeowner's expense, but what about the major trunk lines of this system?
Sure, yeah. And I can point out the provisions in writing to you, but it'd be their responsibility under the license and the applicable provisions, dealing with being in the right of way and public works and complying with your bylaws and regulations to maintain and repair their lines. And also, the lines to the home, that would also, my understanding, be their responsibility if they're the ones who install those lines. And it's a strong license, and I'd be happy to send to the town administrator for your benefit the particular provisions. But yes, the license does address that. It'd be their responsibility. And the license has also excellent language on undergrounding, in the case there was undergrounding at a future point in time. That's always an important issue, too, as you raise explicitly.
Great. I must say, I didn't wade through all the details of the full license. But I have one other small problem, and I'm sure you can deal with easily. And that is the gross annual revenues. Is that Comcast revenues for the state or nationally, or?
Yeah, no, good point. So, yep, it would be the gross annual revenue, and it's only cable revenue, which I'll briefly touch on, but that is derived from the operation, from the provision of cable service over the cable system in Sherburne. So it's from cable service in Sherburne, but it's a broad definition, as I mentioned, also affiliates. If they had, so if they had an affiliate that did doing the same task, that would be there. And it includes service fees and, is it equipment, and a range of other items. But it's a strong definition. It's important because in an age of bundling, where you have one price for cable, internet, and telephone, the only portion of that that counts as revenue upon which the 5% is applied is the cable service. And so how that cable portion of the bundle is determined is very important. So we do have a strong definition, but in the world that exists now and may exist, that's something to keep our eye on. And then finally, it's important, and I'll work with the town on this after the license. It's important to keep in mind that, you know, there are some companies that want to say, well, they have a certain type of box or something streaming, and it's not cable. Well, if what they're providing has the broadcast channels, the over-the-air channels, Channel 4, 5, 7, the broadcast channels, doesn't matter what kind of fiber they send it over, it doesn't matter what kind of box they show it on, that is, on our side of the line, cable service. And anything that's bundled with that is also cable service. So that's something going forward we'll keep our eye on as we look at the quarterly revenues which we receive and track those to make sure that there's no change that looks, that we wonder where, how did the change come about? We would ask about that and then have a right to an audit. And secondly, therefore, thereafter, make sure that if something's cable service, it shouldn't be defined differently because of the type of technology the company uses.
Thank you.
All right, Jeremy?
Yeah, just wanted to help with Marion's question. The town does receive, we receive quarterly statements from Comcast and Verizon as far as, you know, the accounting for all their revenue and how that relates to each license. The overall quarterly gross revenue for Comcast is about $230,000 per quarter. And per the license agreement, 5% of that is the revenue that goes towards the community cable stations.
Great.
All right. Any questions on the board? Okay, I have a question, but I just want to, if you can't answer briefly, it's okay. It's just more curiosity. It doesn't have to be looked up. You mentioned that's free connections, 150 feet to the house from wherever it is, you know, if it's alongside on the other side of the not sure how that works, but either way, it doesn't matter. A lot of the homes are more than 150 feet, probably more than most, I'm willing to bet you, in Sherburne. It's just the way it is. And I get that we're not a big revenue like a Wellsian Natick that's built out and has homes like 50 feet from the road. What's the cost past 150 feet? What's the cost to the homeowner past that? If you don't know off the top of your head, that's not.
No, I would just say that, you know, they'll do an estimate and they'll give an estimate. I mean, it's based, and I guess from my experience, on distance and based on, do they need to put in additional poles? Or is some of it underground? But here, this very important point. In that area, the competition is really important, because if one company says it'll cost you $10,000 to put it in, you have the other company come in and see what they'll put it in for. And then also, although not in the license, anywhere except in one place I know of that I worked on, that folks should also, if they feel the price is too high, they should look at it. They could speak to the town about, speaking to the company from a public perspective, look at what, if they put that line in under the cable company's standards, is that something that'll work? So particularly the Verizon Comcast competition really can be helpful in getting a cost, because they're willing to give you a better price to get a customer.
Yeah, and that's exactly why I was asking. I know Verizon has a FiOS, which is fiber optic, and Comcast has the old-school coaxial and the cost. And then Verizon actually approached me, but I have a 500-foot driveway. All right, any, any, it seems like the board is done with our questions. Anything from the public? Any questions from the general public here? All right, I'll pull it back to the board. Any other questions from the board? I don't hear, or any motions from the board, perhaps? Yes, Paul?
Continue, please.
Yes, I understand that this, we need to continue the hearing to January 9th.
Yes.
In order to allow some of the details to be finalized, have the final paperwork done. So I move that we so extend the hearing, not to close the hearing, but to extend, keep the hearing open till January 9th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
Aye.
Steven?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I might as well. All right, thank you very much, William.
Thank you, and again, I'd like to thank Diane for keeping the trains running on time, I appreciate that very much, thank you.
Okay.
You too.
Be in three weeks. All right, agenda item number two. We have a revote on licenses, let's take care of some administrative issue with that. I believe that there's a bit, not much discussion on it, last time I talked to Jeannie, she thinks we can just go straight to a motion, are there are there any questions about an eighty's? Christmas tree.
It's that time of year.
You got it, I'd be more concerned if it was like May, absolutely. Okay, any motions relative to this, to the licenses? Yeah, Paul?
So I move that we renew the licenses that are listed on the agenda, including the ABCC licenses, the Class Two used car dealers licenses, the common victor's license, and the stable licenses, all as appear on the agenda as posted.
Very good. Do I have a second?
Second, a second emotion.
All in favor, Jeff?
All right.
Steven?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
I might as well, you're good, thank you, everyone. And then finally, we have a consent agenda at the end there, and please approve this, because Fireside needs to be open at twelve thirty, I need you to receive, I hope to go there.
Move to approve the request from Fireside's tab tavern to serve alcohol until twelve thirty. Is that AM twelve thirty?
It is AM. It's definitely
New Year's Eve.
Yep. And are you going to call it the other sense of consent agenda, we also have a one day pouring license, December twenty first, for Bar Master, it's a private event, a community center, and the TA on payroll.
My second motions.
All right, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Steven?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
I might as well. Very good, and thank you, everyone.
Eric, I have I have one quick announcement, if you'll
Okay.
pleasure me, and Jeannie, stay on.
Come on.
Yes. We learned today that Sherborne is awarded, was the award winner for category five Massachusetts Municipal Association Website Award for this year. And the MMA Annual Conference in January, Sherborne will be giving that award.
That's great, it must be those photographs that show up right at the top.
Photographs are spectacular.
Yeah, but it was it was all the iterations we went, I mean, this Jeannie was given a pint of blood every week, okay?
Every week.
It was really a well done, but tortuous pathway, but Jeannie and really led it, and, you know, we looked at other sites and this one ended up being way better, I think, I mean, it's just terrific.
Yeah, they did a really good job with the design, so it was good.
Yeah. I also find our webpage, I mean, I get on a lot of municipal webpages, and I find it pretty easy to navigate. Really do.
Yep, and everybody, don't forget to sign up for the Polar Plunge, January eleventh, it's right on the front page of the website.
If you go in a wet suit, is that cheating?
No, it isn't.
No, I heard today, that's okay. I'll do it then, I have a wet suit.
We'll be there waiting for you.
Jeremy's doing it.
I swam the first week of November, but not for very long, and Dusty Burke was with me.
It's quick.
Well, congratulations on May ward. All right, do I have any motions relative to this meeting, don't force me to make it? Yeah, Paul?
Move to adjourn.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, Jeff?
I don't know, I heck have to vote nay when it's six thirty five at a majority meeting.
Even.
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Paul?
I with the caveat, happy holidays, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Happy Happy New Year, I look forward to seeing them in three weeks, I think they'll be great.
Great year.
Okay, before I say I, even though Eric have a majority vote on this, I've brought it up before. Any opposition to maybe every other meeting being hybrid or something like that, get us together? I know some people still have concerns and stuff like that, get us in a room. I attended the planning board hearing on the MMA, or MWA, MW, MBTA zoning, that's funny. In the three A zoning, it was hybrid, it was pretty good, and people in a room was just different, and this is better, in my opinion.
Or Eric, I I totally get your point, if you're in the room, it's definitely better. But I must say, I was on that meeting on Zoom, and it was a little bit frustrating, it was hard to hear people. You know, you couldn't see who was talking, you saw the back of their heads. You you couldn't hear half the planning board, because they weren't close enough to the mic. I mean, I think there's some stuff to iron out, but if we can iron those out, I agree, it's good to get together now and then.
And I think for someone along on virtual, it'd probably always be better to be pure virtual, I don't I don't think I'll ever be perfect. But it's also bringing us back together again to some degree. Where, I don't know, four, almost five years out, four years and nine months into this, like, pure virtual thing, and it just feels like we're I don't know, turning to movie Avatar, where we're just like Sis and Akut and their little houses and coffins or something, I don't know.
Do we know, Jeremy, maybe you know the answer to this? Like, are there options for microphones in that setup beyond, like, having just the room mic, you know?
Yeah, there there is another mic now, there is a wired mic. I'm not sure where it was located at the planning board hearing last night, but in addition to the mic up near where the camera is, there's a wired mic that is is intended to be sat right before, you know, fixed right before the committee that is supposed to be sensitive to folks speaking in that direction, so.
It was in the middle of the of the table, Jeremy, and you could hear the people near it, but not the people farther away.
Okay, yeah, there may be other options.
This is not an agenda item on our agenda, so if you if this is something new that's come up, not known by the chair forty eight hours in advance, then we need to amend the agenda and have him certify that he didn't know the subject. But otherwise, this should be an agenda item on a on a future meeting.
But it is about actually coordinating a meeting, I thought actually dates of meetings and locations could actually be taken outside of an agenda item.
No, this should be an agenda item.
When we add it, Paul, can you update us on the states, you know, they they may extend the deadline for virtual meetings?
Hasn't happened yet.
Okay.
Yeah, I I do think, though, I was always told that locations and times of meetings could be done of a quorum of the select board without an agenda item, and that's how we've always done it, because it's about coordinating the meeting, we're all talking about the location of a meeting.
Well, we're really talking about virtual meetings, hybrid meetings, or in person meetings, which is a controversial subject in the state as a whole. There are a lot of opinions out there, there are opinions from other boards and so on, all of which, nobody has any notice.
Yep, all right. I I, either way, I am not talking about even a specific meeting in this case. We'll talk, we'll talk about it on the night. All right, and so my final vote is I to adjourn. Have a good holiday.
You too, everyone, thank you very much.
Happy holiday.
Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas, happy holiday.
Ciao, guys.